All right, I'll call to order this Bristol Tennessee City Council meeting of January 8th, 2019. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Robin?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Here.
And Denise?
Here.
I would like to welcome everybody and thank you for your interest in your, for attending tonight's meeting and for your interest in our city government. There are a number of opportunities to speak during tonight's meeting on matters of city business. A sheet explaining those opportunities was available when you entered the meeting room. As we go through tonight's agenda, I'll note each time that public comment is welcome. And, let's see, I think this says it twice. And for things that are city business, it's not on our agenda, that's during our appearance of citizens. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Kathy Wall, who is exec director of the YWCA here in Bristol, and following, and I've asked her just to speak for a second about the upcoming Martin Luther King Jr. events that the train station and the YW are cosponsoring. And following our invocation, I'm very pleased that we have with us Elliot Stout, who is an elementary school student and a nature center volunteer, who is going to lead us in our pledge. So, we really appreciate always to have people participating in our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor File Robin. I thought it appropriate tonight to recite a bit of a prayer from Dr. Martin Luther King, whose life we'll be celebrating this month. As our twin cities, Margaret has mentioned, will be coming together on January 21st at 2:00 for a community march down Martin Luther King Boulevard, and a gathering at the Bristol Train Station. And there will be a group that'll meet on the Virginia side at the First Christian Church at 1:30 for the march, and then a group that'll meet at 1:30 at the YMCA. And those two groups will then march together and meet on State Street. And they will proceed, I guess, under the State Street sign, and together, and sing, and celebrate, and then move on to the train station for a short program in honor of the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. So now, in the words of Dr. King.
Well, if we'll all stand.
Oh God, we thank you for the fact that you have inspired men and women in all nations and in all cultures. We call you different names, but we know that these are all names for one and the same God. Grant that we will follow you and become so committed to your way and your kingdom that we will be able to establish in our lives and in this world a brotherhood and sisterhood, that we will all be able to establish here a kingdom of understanding, where men and women will live together as brothers and sisters, and respect the dignity and worth of every human being. All these things we ask in your name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Elliot Stout?
Please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to our leaders, Elliot Stout and Kathy Wall. We appreciate you very much. Thanks for being with us tonight. Mr. Sora, do you have any additions to our agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
All right. So, tonight, we have a recognition, we have our Bristol First Program that we're so pleased to have as a recognition for our employees. We have over 340 full and part-time employees that serve our city and our community on a daily basis. And frequently, we here, and I know we here on City Council, employees that go above and beyond their service that's required. And that's why this recognition program was established, to recognize these efforts. And our latest recipient of the Bristol First Award, and I'm thrilled to be here to have my picture taken with him, and be here for the presentation, is what?
Jeremy.
Terry Talbert is going to, and you'll say Jeremy Stout and give us the background. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, City Council. Mr. Sora, Jeremy Stout, when you say that name, if you know him, you can't help but smile. He's one of the most meticulously intelligent, steadfast, kindest people that I personally have ever met. Heck, when he enters the phone, you can hear the smile in his voice. What more could anybody ask for in a city employee? He knows everything there is to know about and in his world Steel Creek Park. He knows how to speak to the children that he has the opportunity to teach. He makes the world around them so interesting and beautiful through his eyes. He knows how to leave us adults absolutely dumbfounded, and sometimes leaving us to ask, "How did he know that?" He knows how to listen. He knows how to speak with a gentle voice and tell a story about the natural beauty that surrounds us in the mountains, and win recognition and awards for that ability as well. He knows how to show respectfulness to all the citizens of the city and the staff he encounters. Those actions are the foundation for the unique qualities of Jeremy Stout. Before, when I knew that Jeremy was going to win this award, I jotted down some things, because some of our nominations have very little information, some have more. So, I was just jotting this down in case I needed. I started not to use it. Until I read Michelle Sparks, President of the Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center and Park, when I read her nomination, this was even more personal to me, because everything that I've said, Michelle has said in a totally different way. The question asked on our form is, "What makes your nominee outstanding?" Listen closely. Providing year-round educational programs to the entire community. Nature Center Manager Jeremy Stout is the crown jewel, is the jewel in the city's crown. No task is too big or too small for him to handle. Mentor to many young building naturalists, Jeremy's easygoing attitude brings folks of all ages together. For his many stimulating talks, challenging hikes, and entertaining public speaking engagements, he has a vast knowledge of the natural beauty of the park that shines through his many informative and, excuse me, informative episodes of the Steel Creek Explorer routinely featured on VTN-TV. On behalf of the Friends of Steel Creek Park, who work closely with Mr. Stout, and with many park-related community and educational projects, we feel naturalist Jeremy Stout is worthy of the Bristol First Award every month of the year.
Jeremy, if you'll come forward.
I thought I was just here to deliver the Pledge of Allegiance leader. What a surprise. Thank you so much. When I first started with Steel Creek Park in 2006, Steel Creek Park was only what it was to me. It was 2,200 acres of biodiversity and natural history. What I was admittedly a little slow to come around to is the realization that that park
two where some outside animal ended up in our house and losing their lives in different
is something very different to everyone who goes there, whether it's a golfer, or a kayaker,
ways. And every time, we call Jeremy and say, "It's in pretty good shape, do you want it?"[552.16][552.16](laughter) He's very enthusiastic.
or a fisherman, someone attending a barbecue at a family reunion.
The most recent was a bat.
The park leaves an indelible mark on everyone who visits it.
And so, if you have some interesting specimens, don't hesitate to call Jeremy and see if
And I'm very thankful, in the 12 years since then, to share what the park means to me
there's-
with others while also learning what it means to them.
Put them in your own freezer until I can do-
Put them in a bag in the freezer.
So, I'm very thankful to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and to the City of
There you go. And it adds to, it adds to the collection, and they have taxidermy skills as well as
Bristol, and to the community. If you all will keep me there, I would love to be there for a lot longer. Thank you so much.[581.04][581.04](applause)
using skeletons and all kinds of different things. So, anyway, we appreciate you, Jeremy. Hopefully, you know a little bit of how we appreciate you, but hopefully, it's more than, more than you know and more than you realize. Next on our agenda, we have our financial audit review, comprehensive annual financial report. We are very pleased to have Mr. Matt Hill with us, with Maudlin and Jenkins. And this is the independent auditor's report, and we're always glad to get to this point and done with it.[619.04][619.04](laughter)
I do that a lot.
Right.
I remember the highlights.
And I know Tara is, and, but we appreciate the work you do with us and the accountability it provides.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we basically issued our opinions on the June 30, 2018 financial statements. You know, again, I work for Maudlin and Jenkins. We do more governmental audits than really any firm in the southeast. It's what I spend 100% of my time on. We do about 300 of them a year. So, it's something that we feel that we have a really good level of expertise with. Certainly, our job is to come in and provide opinions on the financial statements. These are management's financial statements. We're really just coming in to test them and provide assurances. That being said, I mean, the most important thing is the opinion that we do put on it. And we do have unmodified opinions on the financial statements. Your, basically, your internal controls over the financial statements in that process, as well as a unmodified or clean opinion on the, your scheduled expenditures of federal awards, and the federal programs that we do, where it's basically, it's a single audit where we have to go in and test a certain percentage of the federal money that you receive every year. The feds give us guidelines, we go through. So, we do that testing as part of our audit process as well. Of course, having all three of those unmodified opinions is about the best that you can do. Also, we look at your internal control structure. We analyze certain things that we see as far as processes, in order to see if there's anything as far as processes or adjustments that need to be made, that may result in some sort of audit finding, which we have to report. Again, we have no audit findings. So, in terms of the audit itself, I mean, it doesn't go, from our perspective, a whole lot better than that. And that certainly attribute to management, Bill, and Tara, and all of her staff doing excellent job, as you can tell by the size of it, and it keeps getting bigger every year. It's no easy task to get all this put together and have all this done in order for us to be able to audit it. Also, you know, the city is part of what is a voluntary program through the Government Finance Officer Association, where they submit this information, which not only includes the stuff that's required by the state and the feds, but also other supplemental information, additional things that you don't have to do, but kind of going above and beyond what's required in order to qualify for what they call is the GFOA Certificate of Financial Reporting. And again, last year, the 2017 report was submitted, and the certificate was gotten again for I don't know how many years in a row now, and we certainly anticipate that the 18 report is going to get that as well. So, in addition to doing everything that you're required to do, you're also doing things that you're not required to do, but goes the extra mile to include additional information that may be useful to any of the readers of the financial statement. So, certainly, that's another testament to your management and to what y'all do as far as a governing body. In terms of the statements themselves, I know it's going to disappoint everybody, but I'm not going to go through all 257 odd pages. We're just going to kind of hit the highlights. I do want to point out a couple things. One of the big changes in the standards this year, didn't really affect y'all too much, but it has been something significant that I do want to point out. So, if you'll take a look at this monstrosity here, we'll start kind of at where I always like to point out, and that's on page 13. And this is management's discussion and analysis. And the reason that I always like to point this out is, this essentially provides a lot of good summary information for everything that's actually in the financial statements themselves. This is written by management. We don't really opine on this, so it's not part of what we give an opinion on, but the numbers are all the same. And what it does additionally is it provides some context. So, if you had an increase in revenues, or something really weird with expenditures, or you had a significant debt issuance, management's discussion and analysis would be where you could kind of go and get a good idea of what's coming after it. And the reason that I say I always like to point this out is it's a much smaller version. You've got maybe 15 pages to get through, rather than the 240-odd pages or so that are after it. So, if you've got any questions, and you want to be able to see comparative information, which also is in the financial statements, this is what I would kind of go to as a good sort of way to keep up with what you're looking at. And for the most part, these numbers aren't going to be any surprise to you. I mean, you get budgeted estimates. The only thing that's kind of different that we're going to take a minute to look at, is we do have like a government-wide set of financial statements that are included, and those don't always get reported in every budget. It's kind of something that just gets done at year-end. We'll talk a little bit about why that is. But we want to go ahead and just point out the management discussion and analysis before we get into kind of looking at just a few of the things in the statements themselves. And the statements themselves actually start on page 30, with the statement of net position. And the statement of net position, if you're familiar more with private businesses rather than governmental accounting, this is kind of set up like a balance sheet. So, we've got our assets. We've got these weird things over here called deferred outflows of resources, which is really just kind of an asset, but, you know, they got to have accounting rules for everything, so they wanted to call it something different. And then on the next page, we've got our liabilities, our deferred inflows of resources, which operate kind of like liabilities. And then our net position, which is kind of like the equity. And the thing I kind of want to point out here, it's not necessarily the total net position and everything, or looking at each of the individual assets. I do want to look over at the liability side, just so we can kind of talk a little bit about the change this year in accounting standards. And that's that, kind of that last line there in total, under liabilities, before we get to the total liabilities, and that's that net OPEB liability. And what this is, is essentially, you have, and I think you've probably got four plans all together, between the schools and the city, BTS, and you've got these plans that are basically set up to provide post-employment benefits other than pensions. We went through all this probably three or four years ago with pensions, where this exact same thing happened. But what we didn't have, and what we've got this year, is we've got this liability. So, this is the thing that's new. This has never been in this statement. It's never been considered a liability. All the information has always been included in the footnotes, but it was never actually on the face of the financial statements. So, as you can see, that net OPEB liability for your governmental activities is about 8.2. Business-type activities, about 7.9. They give you about $16 million in total. So, that's something that really hasn't been there in the past. The good news is, y'all's, y'all's plans are pretty well-funded, and relatively speaking, when I say that, when I look at the size, when I look at your total expenses, when I look at, you know, the number of employees, y'all are pretty well-funded and covered as compared to a lot of other governments. So, while this $16 million is a big number in totality, comparatively speaking, it's not nearly as bad as what I see in some other places. In a lot of cases, these, these plans aren't funded at all. So, as y'all have been putting money away to help pay for these, a lot of them, and it's sort of industry standard in a lot of cases, are kind of pay-as-you-go. But that was the big change that we had as far as accounting standards for this past fiscal year, so I did want to point that out. But as you can kind of see, like I talked about with the assets and liabilities, we come down, we've got our net position, or basically kind of our equity. If we look at each of those, that first line there, that net investment in capital assets, and what we're trying to do there, and what accounting standards have us do, is essentially take what we've got as far as property and equipment, that we're not really holding for resale, or to generate current financial resources, and we kind of separate that out and say, "Okay, we've got, you know, 100 million, 103 million at the governmental, 102 at business-type activities. This is really, this is our property, this is our equipment." These are things where, yeah, we may sell a car down the road, but we're not planning on selling a sewer system. You know, so we don't actually go through the process of breaking those out and considering them expendable resources. It gets broken out here. You can kind of see the other categories. We've got restrictions for different things, capital, community development, of course, education. It comes down to that unrestricted number. And again, you know, unrestricted doesn't necessarily mean that it's cash that's available, but essentially, that sort of earmarks, these are the resources that you probably got on a positive side, that you can sort of plan in the near term, that will turn into some sort of liquid, or liquid asset that you can then use towards your future expenditures. So, that's kind of your statement of net position. And were any questions about that? The next page is our statement of activities. And again, the statement of net position and statement of activities are government-wide. They're on an accrual basis. So, when we talk about those, what does that mean? That means that we've got things like our capital assets and our debt in these schedules, which in the actual fund-level statements, which we'll look at briefly, we don't. But that's really the big difference here. But when we're looking at the statement of activities, it reads kind of left to right. So, we start off with sort of our expenses, and then go through our different types of revenues, to come down to sort of a net there. We've got this net expense kind of there to the right. And then that sort of brings us down to where we can sort of analyze, okay? In terms of just on the basis of things that we can specifically identify related to this particular activity, whether it's general government, community development, that sort of thing, where are we at with that? And then we come down below there, and we've got these general revenues. So, these are things, and the big one's always property taxes. These are things that we don't necessarily have allocated to any one of those functions. It can kind of go towards supporting everything. And as you can kind of see, we've got different types of taxes in there. We've got transfers to get down sort of a total general revenues and transfers to come to a change in net position. So, that's kind of our scorecard, our net income. As you can see, you had a change in net position of about 4.2 million on your government, and about 6.7 on your business-type activities, for a total of 11 million. So, you did have a positive when we were looking at the government-wide statements for the year. The next page is when we get into the fund-level stuff. So, the fund level is basically, if we take everything that we just talked about, we kind of suck out the things, the capital assets, the debt, so your bonds payable, all that pension and OPEB stuff that we just talked about. This is all kind of outside of that. And of course, the big thing that I look at here, when we're looking at this, is sort of, again, when we're looking at that fund balance at the bottom. So, we've got our assets, we've got our liabilities, they kind of fit into some of the same categories, and then we've got our fund balance. Well, the most important fund, especially for y'all, in some cases, it's not this way, but is that general fund. So, when I'm analyzing and I'm looking at, you know, sort of where you're at fiscally as far as meeting cash needs, I kind of tend to focus on that general fund. And as you can see, in that fund balance, we've got all these different categories. Well, the one that I kind of focus on is that, that one that's unassigned, which is that bottom number. It's about $15 million. So, what I actually do is then I sort of compare that to your expenditures, which we're going to look at on the next page, in order to sort of get a ratio. And what I like to sort of see is about 40% of unassigned fund balance compared to your expenditures, which we're going to look at. And y'all are above that 40%. So, you know, in terms of where you're at financially, I think that you have a healthy fund balance to, in order to support your current needs. And really, what that does is it helps prevent any sort of delays or funding issues for certain projects, and looking at that, that's, that looks good. So, if we go over to the next page, actually, it's a couple pages over, on page 35, that's the statement of revenues expenditures. This is just like your income statement, sort of like the statement of activities. And again, I kind of look at that general fund. And when I said I compare your unassigned fund balance to your expenditures, you see that number there is at $26.1 million for total expenditures for your general fund. Of course, I also add to that, if we skip down a little bit into that next section of other financing sources and uses, we've got these things, transfers in and transfers out. That's where the general fund is essentially just sending money to another fund to help support certain operations, you know, maybe budgeted that way. But y'all got about a $6 million net as far as transfers out. So, when I look at that $6 million and that $26, that's the $32 million that I kind of look at when I'm comparing your unassigned fund balance of 15. So, you got that 15 to 32, which, like I said, that's more than the 40% that I normally like to see. So, in terms of that, that is basically puts y'all in a good position as far as that goes as well. The rest of this, I'm not really that interested in going through a lot of the numbers. The only other kind of statement I do just want to point out is going to be your statement of cash flows for your proprietary funds, and that's on page 49. And really, what I kind of like to look at here is essentially that top section. Cash flows from operating activities. When we're talking about proprietary funds, these are funds that in theory operate more like a business, where we've got charges for services rather than taxes that really support a lot of this stuff. And so, what I'd like to see in that situation is to have positive numbers in that top sort of section there, where we've got cash flows from operating activities. Because that sort of sets you up then for what you can do with replacing capital, capital assets, or in terms of financing new debt. So, you've got a pretty good, you know, the electric, about 10.6, and then we've got the waterworks and the stormwater, both have positive. Those two, waterworks and stormwater, that's about where they've been historically, so that's a good sign. We, like I said, that we do want those numbers to be positive. That's everything that I wanted to go through, kind of in the statements. The only other thing I really wanted to point out was in one of the footnotes on page 99. And again, this just relates to some of that OPEB stuff that we were talking about before. So, if you wanted to kind of see, this is a summary of each of the different plans that the city is responsible for. And kind of that top one there, that top section where we've got the net OPEB liability, you could kind of see what we're talking about as far as how those are getting allocated to the various plans. And if you had any interest in kind of looking at the funded status, where, you know, I said, "This is the net OPEB liability." Well, the net OPEB liability is basically your total OPEB liability, whatever you sort of put aside. In the footnotes and pages behind this, if you had any sort of curiosity about how that kind of worked out, what the funding status was for a particular plan, how much you had in there versus how much you owed, that information is in there behind that as well. I don't want to go through that individually, but I do think it's important to point out, especially in the year of implementation. It might be something that you just want to look at. Everything else in the notes, I think, is pretty much standard compared to the prior year. It really is just there to support those numbers that are up there in the actual financial statements themselves, which we kind of went through. The only other thing that I really want to point out is just for reference sake, you've got a tab that says "Statistical" on it. And when I talked about the voluntary program for GFOA to get the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, a lot of that is driving this stuff that's included in the statistical section. And just the reason that I want to point it out is it does have some non-financial information. So, demographic trends, employee trends, that type of stuff is included in here. Sometimes, that's useful when you're trying to look at something other than, "Hey, what did our bottom line do this year?" type of thing. So, those schedules are in there, they are referenced up there. So, if any of that interests you, then that information is there available. That being said, that's kind of everything that I wanted to go through as far as the audit and the statements themselves, but happy to answer any questions or expand on anything else if y'all have any questions.
Could you explain, or just expand a little bit on, under the statistical section?
Sure.
The debt capacity?
Um, there is a certain legal, there are certain legal requirements that you can only issue a certain percentage of debt based on expenditures and revenues and that sort of thing. It just tracks to make sure that you're not above that, that point where you can't issue debt legally. And it's kind of, in most cases that I've seen, I can't remember one, it's usual, I mean, it's always well, well underneath. I've never really had that become a problem for anybody, but it is a calculation that's included in that stat section. The only other thing that I really want to point out is just for reference sake, you've got a tab that says statistical on it. And when I talked about the voluntary program for GFOA to get the certificate of excellence in financial reporting, a lot of that is driving this stuff that's included in the statistical section. And just the reason that I want to point it out is it does have some non-financial information, so demographic trends, employee trends, that type of stuff is included in here. Sometimes that's useful when you're trying to look at something other than, hey, what did our bottom line do this year type of thing? So those schedules are in there, they are referenced up there, so if any of that interests you, then that information is there available. That being said, that's kind of everything that I wanted to go through as far as the audit and the statements themselves, but happy to answer any questions or expand on anything else if y'all have any questions.
Could you explain or just expand a little bit on, under the statistical section?
Sure.
The debt capacity?
Um, there is a certain legal, there are certain legal requirements that you can only issue a certain percentage of debt based on expenditures and revenues and that sort of thing. It just tracks to make sure that you're not above that, that point where you can't issue debt legally. And it's kind of, in most cases that I've seen, I can't remember one, it's usual, I mean, it's always well, well underneath. I've never really had that become a problem for anybody, but it is a calculation that's included in that stat section if you wanted to go through and actually look at that. Y'all are, let me second, pull up the indicators. I don't know that y'all have, yeah. So on page 235, y'all actually don't have anything that actually qualifies as the general bonded debt, which is what this schedule's intended to provide, so at this point, there is really no calculation. So y'all don't have any real things where we'd have to make some sort of calculation, so we just put in a schedule that says there's nothing here to consider. That's not to say that you don't have liabilities and you don't have long-term liabilities, just nothing that qualifies based on what GFOA wants to see in this, which is more general bonded type debt.
Any other questions? Mr. Sora, can you tell us where public can find this document if they wish to?
If it's not posted on our website, it will be. It is posted on our website.
It's on our website, and I think sometime, do we provide hard copies at the library or, I know we do of our budget. We appreciate you greatly, Tara, we appreciate you and your staff. I think my experience with different organizations is some of this, particularly like bylaws, et cetera, finances, people don't necessarily pay a whole lot of attention, they find it fairly boring until there's a problem.
Right.
So we like being boring. So we appreciate your being boring.
It was incredibly boring, so, yeah, thank you.
We appreciate that greatly, very much, so thank you and thanks for coming and explaining. And I can say I served on the library board and visits there to, where we have opportunity to sit down with you and ask questions, it's also very helpful to
Great.
Take time to, to do that, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like we ought to clap or something. Okay, so we have another presentation, kind of fun presentation, of our fiscal year 2018 accomplishments or our regular annual year accomplishments video. Terry Talbert, you want to tell us about it?
First of all, I want to say it's a little ironic that we're following this report, but anyway, the video you're about to see was actually the brainchild of a sister city in the South and that felt that government could be a little more interesting once in a while, so we borrowed their idea. The city's, the city's innovative Bristol Bragg video uses creative motion graphics to showcase the many accomplishments of the year 2018 in a concise seven minutes. We hope that you will find this as a refreshing change imparting important and relevant information with a little humor along the way. Government reporting, and this is what I feel bad about now saying, government reporting has a reputation for those reading it drowning in stats, data, columns, and unrecognizable verbiage. Sometimes honestly, that can be a little difficult to get your head around, especially for us right-brain thinking people. We hope this brings to life all the effort that our community has into making Bristol the place that it is, but also recognizes the time, energy, and leadership City Council puts forth each year and the work city staff does to ensure that we have met the standards that you all have imparted to us. To say the least, there are tons of things not mentioned in this video, but we know how hard it is in today's world to keep anyone's attention more than five minutes, so we just hit the high points of a very, very successful year. So as they say, sit back, relax, and enjoy Bristol Bragg.
Welcome to the Emmy Award-winning Bristol, Tennessee 2018 Highlight Show, also known as Bristol Bragg Time, where we tell you all about our wonderful city's major accomplishments. Okay, so we haven't won an Emmy yet, but it did make you pay attention, didn't it? It's been a busy time for Bristol, Tennessee, full of many wonderful achievements and just as much fun. So you're probably wondering, and even if you're not, I'm going to tell you, what happened to make it such a fantastic year? So glad you asked. For starters, several hundred thousand people once again attended events at Bristol Motor Speedway and Bristol Dragway, two of the finest racing facilities in the world, and boy, did they have a great time. All of that action and speed really had them on their feet and more than a little excited about coming back next year. Nearly 44,000 people packed historic Bristol for the annual Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion Festival in September. And speaking of music, The Sounds of Summer Concert Series and Border Bash hosted more than 50 bands, with nearly 29,000 people enjoying all those wonderful tunes. The Paramount, one of the brightest jewels in our crown, saw more than 27,000 visitors fill the historic theater for 71 live music, dance, comedy, ballet, plays, and film performances. Meanwhile, the birthplace of Country Music Museum continued to draw massive crowds as 30,000-plus visitors learned about Bristol's role in the birth of country music. We've also been able to make all kinds of great upgrades on and around our rooms. More than 12 miles of streets were resurfaced, while 2,600 feet of sidewalks were added in the Fairmount area. And don't forget that we replaced the trees along State Street, making our charming downtown even more beautiful and inviting. We also initiated a downtown study plan, and to keep that downtown synergy going, we hosted another Coffee with the Council. And what about our police and fire departments, who are always there when we need them? Our police department continued its excellent engagement in our community, and our 71 officers were unceasing in keeping us all safe and out of trouble, and for some of us, that's no easy task. They took part in the National Night Out, operated the Citizens Police Academy, and Camp Challenge. Well, I could go on and on, but I've only got a few minutes. Our fire department, also an amazing community partner, answered more than 5,100 calls, installed 344 smoke detectors to our residents at no charge, and trained more than 31,190 hours. Oh, and this is a biggie, they received their first national accreditation. Are we lucky to have these folks in Bristol or what? We know how to build in Bristol, too, as we constructed a new fire station out of the pinnacle, while we completed a school facility study and purchased land for the construction of the new Vance Middle School. We also expanded the hugely popular splash pad facilities at Steel Creek Park, and a wastewater treatment plant aeration system upgrade started with 80% of the construction already completed from the $2.6 million construction contract. Let's not forget, like I'm going to let you, that we started a comprehensive community vision plan, in which 492 citizens participated, while 19 community members are now serving on the advisory committee. We also issued 289 residential permits and issued residence permits for more than $7 million in construction. And commercial construction rose to nearly $20 million. Not too shabby, eh? We continue enhancing our economic strategy to advance jobs, create business, and bring in more retail. After all, why wouldn't you want to do business with us? If you've been listening, it's obvious we're pretty darn great. Moving right along, we held the Fourth Annual Hiring Expo, which was another success within excess of 700 job seekers and 45 businesses participating. Yep, when it comes to our city, boy, aren't we lucky to be living in Bristol right now? With everything you've already heard, there's even more we just have to tell you about, including our Moody's AA2 bond rating, our comprehensive annual financial report. We were a first annual pineapple award recipient. The Ida S. Jones Tennis Center earned national recognition from the United States Tennis Association. We received a 99 out of 100 on the Water Systems Sanitary Survey from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. We received the 2018 John S. Wilder Rebuild Tennessee Award for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Aeration Upgrade Project from the Tennessee Department District Association. Boy, who's that a mouthful? Our Parks and Rec Department also had another banner year, with thousands of people taking part in more than 100 different programs. And how lucky we are to have a park as gorgeous as Steel Creek for us to enjoy, not to mention that Nature Center expansion. Retail continues to grow in Bristol at the pinnacle, the region's premier shopping experience, which draws 6 million visitors every year and is responsible for 2,000 jobs. And in downtown, which continues to thrive with lots of help from our friends that believe in Bristol. We're running out of time, because, hey, Bristol is booming and we've really got it going on. But we have to mention Aerospace Park, which is going to be huge, the Tri-Cities Business Festival, Center Point 74, our fabulous State Street Farmer's Market, little libraries and big libraries, because the Bristol library is the absolute best, our $22 million investment in a new downtown hotel, a 50-acre site in the Bristol Business Park that already has a 36-acre pad ready to go, and Dog Park Dash, for which we received a $25,000 grant. And did I mention that our new Bristol is branding has been off the charts? And the quarter of a million visitors who visit our website yearly will soon enjoy an improved sight. The spotlight is shining brightly on our city, and it's all due to the wonderful people in Bristol, Tennessee, and maybe just a little bit because of all the great folks that help run and lead this amazing place we call home. We can't thank our city leaders and officials enough, as well as the 60-plus board and commission members who volunteer their time and efforts for making Bristol a great place to live, work, and play, because Bristol is definitely something special.
It's exceptional, and it's so great that they're using the graphics that they're using. This is actually very similar to the Hatch show prints in its style, and the Hatch show prints are very important to our musical heritage. They originated in Nashville and Lower Broad, the Hatch family did their prints there, and so the way that community, our Department of Community Relations has taken that bit of artistic and put it into motion is just exceptional, and I would really encourage everyone tomorrow to be sure and, and see it online. What a great teaser, to get everybody to go to the site and to see it in its entirety. So, great job.
Yes, we continue to receive more from our Department of Community Relations as well as ask for more. It's one of those do a good job and you're going to have more jobs to do, so we, it's been fun to see how that department has grown and expansion of capabilities, both with talents and technology, so really, really appreciate that. All right, we have one public hearing tonight, and it's to amend the zoning map by designating certain properties as B3 general business in the English Street area. Mr. Sora, how about talking to us about it?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. As you're aware, City Council approved this on first reading last month. This deals with Melrose, English Street, Seventh Street, and Voluntar Parkway, the section where they come together. There's a total of 15 parcels involved in this, three of which the city owns. Earlier in the fall, staff received a request from an owner of three of the parcels requesting consideration of the rezoning the property from its current zoning of M1 Light Manufacturing to B3. As staff looked at that, they felt like it was appropriate to look in a, at a broader scope in terms of the context of the use of that property, and would, would more parcels be suitable for rezoning? And brought this issue to the Planning Commission at their November 19th meeting and received a favorable recommendation at that time. Again, this was presented to, to this body at your December 4th meeting. Tim Beavers, Director of Development Services now, will review this in, in greater detail than, than my overview.
Good evening. As Mr. Sora mentioned, this was a request by Carl R. Moore Jr., most people know him as Randy Moore, for three parcels originally wanted to go from the M1 to the B3 zone, so the B3 zone allows residential development where the M1 zone doesn't, and he was looking at opportunities for those parcels to possibly do some residential development. There are 15 total parcels, 12 parcels by seven property owners, are owned by seven property owners, three parcels are owned by the city, and currently, as we stated, zoned M1 Light Industry Business, and the request was for B3 general business. Looking at the map, you can see it's bounded, area in red, by Melrose Street, Voluntar Parkway, Seventh Street over there. On the right side, you will see Velocity Sports, there's a law office over there, and on the left side's Applebee's, so that ought to give you some geography there to get you oriented. Current zoning, once again, is M1, and as you can see in this graphic, that pocket of M1 is surrounded mostly by business. You see mostly by B3 zoning, you have some B1A and B2 to the left, and then there's a slight piece of R3 on Seventh Street, but in general, in looking at this, you have an old M1 zone in the, just making a pocket here, it used to be served by rail, that all the uses around it now are business. So we looked at this as a whole from the three requests and say, this is a good time to take care of this and get it zoned appropriately based on the current uses around the property and in the area, and also the future land use map, which shows that area as a commercial quarter or a commercial area. So that was our basis for looking at that whole M1 area. This is a overhead of it again, the three properties, it's hard to see, you might see better on this screen, in blue. We did have some responses from the property owners inside, all of them were in favor of it. There were two of the blue, the Hygentec, and there was Auto, I don't know, Repair Shop or a place a gentleman, he works on his own cars, that weren't in favor of the rezoning because they didn't want to allow residential properties adjacent to them. And then the other blue, a machine shop, we could not get a response back, they were very difficult to get a hold of, but with no response, we just assumed they didn't have any opinion and just assumed that was, meant they weren't in favor of it, so that's the three properties shown in blue. This is just an aerial photo looking, down at the bottom, you will see Melrose Street. Up at the top, it's hard to see, sort of in upper left, there's Applebee's up there, but you can see the characteristics of the area, and it's really not manufacturing. And this is what got us looking at this whole area, that whole pocket. This is looking south, you'll see Applebee's in the center. Up at the top center, you will see Melrose Street up there, but that gives you a perspective of what's around it, mostly business. You do have a little bit of residential on Seventh Street, but it's mostly business-oriented operations in and around the zone. B3 general business, these are the loud uses, y'all have seen this slide a lot lately, but you can run down and look at all those uses. That's not the complete list, the complete list is very long, and we would take up several slides and a lot of time if we went through it all, but in general, that's some of the uses. M1, here are the uses allowed in M1. The first bullet is, with the exception of funeral homes and residential uses, and that's the main request right there, because the gentleman wanted to have potential to do a residential development on his property, so that was the initial request, because M1 does not allow residential. So you can look at that, and you can see in M1, you see how, although it's our lightest industrial, you see some of the things allowed in M1 that probably does not fit in this area very well at all, so. Staff did recommend that the properties be zoned from M1 to B3, three reasons being they're compatible with future land use map. That area, you saw the future land use map showing it commercial. The majority of the surrounding properties are zoned for business use, and you saw the uses in and out, and they are mostly business. Characteristics of the area are more compatible with the B3 zoning. And then, as I said, we did see, received two comments also from adjacent property owners. Now, these weren't property owners in the area, the three blue ones, these were adjacent to the rezoning request, that whole area that were in favor. We did not receive any negative responses from the adjacent property owners. As Mr. Sora mentioned, Planning Commission did unanimously forward a favorable recommendation to City Council to pass, or to rezon this from M1 to B3. With that, I can answer any questions. Try to.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'll ask one, just to clarify. I think we've touched on this maybe in Planning Commission, but in regards to the, how, how would this affect the current business owners going forward with continuing business?
They're allowed by right, their uses that they're currently doing, all their uses are allowed in the B3 zone by right. And if they weren't, they would be grandfathered in with that use, but they are, the ones currently there are allowed by right in the B3 zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone here tonight like to? Would anyone here tonight like to address council on this matter? Seeing, oh, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do I have to say that?
I think we did stop.
I'll open the public hearing and say, is anybody here tonight to address council on this matter? And seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And next, we have appearance of citizens. This time on our agenda is an opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter that's not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business, and a response is not likely to be made at this time since, in most cases, neither the council nor the city manager is prepared to effectively respond to concerns. Possibilities are that the city manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council as appropriate, or have staff meet with people in an effort to satisfy concerns or learn more. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to speak, select a spokesperson to represent them. I've been provided a list from those who signed up, and first on my list is David Ring. If you can come forward, and if you'll state your name and address for the record, we will appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Faure Robin, City Council Mr. Sora. My name is David Ring. I live at 2020 King College Road. These comments this evening are very easy for me to offer, and it'll probably be quite easy for you all to accept because they represent nothing but very well-deserved compliments and accolades. Beginning in October of last year, I participated in the Citizens Police Academy that is offered by the city. There were eight people in this class. Coincidentally, Peggy Staten was one of them. Over a nine-week period, we met on Monday evenings, usually here at the Slater Center, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Each class was taught by a different officer with the police department. Citizens like Peggy and myself received a very detailed overview on several different areas of law enforcement. And if you're not familiar with the Citizens Police Academy, it included instruction in topics such as traffic laws, DUIs, how that officers will respond when they are met with resistance, a tour of the 911 communications center, how building searches are conducted, narcotics laws, SWAT team tactics, the use of canines in law enforcement, explosive devices, and crime scene investigation procedures. The course also included two opportunities to ride with police officers, as well as instruction in the firearms range. Albeit many years ago, I actually have a limited background in law enforcement, because in the 80s and 90s, I was with the Bristol, Virginia Police Department as an auxiliary officer, which is the equivalent of a reserve officer here in Bristol, Tennessee. But even without any prior knowledge, I would rate the quality of the Citizens Police Academy program is excellent and outstanding. After completing this program, I left with three takeaways that I'd like to very briefly share with you. Number one, first, law enforcement has changed an awfully lot in the almost 30 years since I was with Bristol, Virginia. The technology has advanced, there's a lot more paperwork, and there's much more training that's required of police officers. Secondly, I believe you all know that I work at Strongwell, and on a daily basis, I deal with engineers and accountants, IT experts, attorneys, as well as individuals that specialize in sales and marketing, manufacturing, HR and health and safety. But I can say that I deal with no one who is any more well-trained, professional, and passionate about the work they do than the police officers that I met while I was participating in this class.
David, we enjoy this, wind it up.
Okay. Our city is fortunate to employ these officers. But in closing, I commend the council for their foresight and the wisdom that you exhibit in supporting this program. I believe the city benefits a lot by having as many citizens as possible who are educated in the field of law enforcement. So, on the behalf of the people who went through this program, I want to commend the council, as well as the officers of the Bristol, Virginia, Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Terry Talbert's probably taking your name and pegs to do interviews, to do PR for the academy in the future. So, congratulations, Chief Wade, for the work that your department does with that, and I'll remind everybody that we also have a Fire Academy as well. So, okay. And next on my list is John Cartwright, if you'd like to come forward and give your name and address for the record.
John Cartwright, I'm a property owner on Pennsylvania Avenue, several properties. We've got a situation that I kind of documented on my own with some photographs of our homeless, vagrant, whatever you might want to label it, problem. But they're up on 2nd Street in vacant lots. We've had one house burn in the last three months that was due to them breaking in and out. They're using the alley between Tennessee Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue as, I guess, their exercise track, I'm not entirely sure. But that kind of traffic breeds a problem in the fair amount of area. I know the property owners are concerned, I'm concerned, I want to see how concerned you all are. So, it's up to you, do whatever you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your concern, and we share it. And we'll do some more talking about what we can do immediately. There's plans more for long-term, but we'll for sure follow up with that, and hopefully some folks will get back with you as well. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to address City Council? Seeing none, we will go on to the next agenda item, which is the appointments, and tonight we have one to the library board. And the one applicant for one board is Gloria Oster, who currently serves as president of that board. And I think she's, I forget where she is, she completed, she took over somebody's term, so she's somewhere in the middle of doing that. Does anybody else wish to speak for Gloria Oster?
I'd like to share, she's currently serving as her chair for the library board, and she's put some great energy into it, and I appreciate her service and stepping up. I think you're correct, she filled a vacancy of an unexpired term, and this would be her first full term.
And Gloria comes to, she was a high school English teacher and then worked with the Department of Education at King University.
She's also very involved with the Art Alliance and other activities in the community, so...
It's a good match.
Good match.
All right, Keane votes for Gloria Oster, Powers votes for Gloria Oster, Denise votes for Gloria Oster, Young votes for Gloria Oster, and Faure Robin votes for Gloria Oster.
Gloria Oster is appointed to the library board. We have no ordinance for first reading, and we have our adoption of ordinance on second reading that we just had our public hearing. We've had the summary, so if there aren't any further questions, I'll take a motion on, this is to amend the zoning map by designating certain property as B3 general business in the English Street area. Ordinance 18-5.
I make the motion to accept ordinance 18-15 to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain property as B3 in the English Street area.
You did that very well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we're ready to vote.
Faure Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Okay, we have, that does pass. We have three resolutions on our agenda, and the first one is delegation 19-1, delegating authority under the Border Region Retail Tourism Development District Act, that's a big mouthful, to the Bristol Industrial Development Board to utilize this Chapter 420 incentives for a project located at 3269 West State Street. Mr. Sora, if you'll summarize it for the public, that'd be great.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. As council will recall, you were briefed on this project at the December 18 works, work session. As, there is interest in the development of a new hotel on property located at 3269 West State Street. The property is situated near Interstate 81 at exit 74, and is located within the Border Region Retail Tourism Development District. Bristol Hospitality LLC is the developer, and they propose to construct a minimum of a 40,000-square-foot, 75-room, brand-named hotel on this site. They have requested the use of state sales tax incentives provided through the Chapter 420 legislation. Resolution 19-1 authorizes our Industrial Development Board to enter into a development agreement with Bristol Hospital LLC. The agreement provides the developer 90% of the state sales tax increment as described in the Chapter 420 legislation. This sales tax increment is available to recover eligible costs involved in the development of the property. They will also assume two public infrastructure improvement projects with the property. One is the extension of sanitary sewer to the project, and the other is the installation of a turn lane into the property on West State Street. This will be funded by the developer and through the use of the state sales tax incentive. As with other similar projects in the district, the city will retain 10% of the state sales tax increment available from the activity on this property to assist in retiring the bond that the city incurred three, four years ago now in improving infrastructure to spur development within this region.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but would you please share this whole border region legislation? When does it sunset?
It would be 42, excuse me, 2042?
2042.
2042. Now, there is, though, that is the recovery period for the state sales tax incentive. There is an initial investment period, and that would be 2027, I think now, has been adjusted. Last year, through legislation, increasing an additional five years on the front end of the investment period. So, investment would have to be made within the 2027 period, but then would be allowed through 2042 to recover the state sales tax increment to offset development costs.
So, if anyone were interested in trying to make an investment in this area, it would be in their best interest to make it no later than 2027. Does the investment have to be completed in its development by 2027?
No, that's the initial investment period.
The initial investment period, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 19-1 authorizing border region.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
You choose, Tara. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address this, address council on this matter? Seeing none, I believe we're ready to vote.
Faure Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 19-2 authorizes the sale of real property to Toniva LLC. Mr. Sora, if you can talk to us about this, and we've looked at it at our work session.
Yes, she did. And as council may recall, this is also a brand hotel being proposed for the 900 block of West State Street. Earlier in the, in the process of advancing the project, council approved a land lease agreement to use a portion of the property that's currently utilized as a water system interconnection between the city of Bristol, Tennessee's water system and that of Bristol, Virginia Utilities. The purpose of the land lease to Toniva, and if we could advance the slide to show, that is outlined in green, and a portion of it is outlined in red. The purpose of that land lease was to allow the developer the opportunity to use that footprint for parking. It's used for parking to support the hotel development, does not interfere with its use as a system interconnection in that the infrastructure is below ground. As recently, as site plans for the proposed development were submitted to our Development Services Department, it was noted that a portion of the building encroached upon that land lease area, and that's noted in the red area that you see outlined in the illustration. The total property is 4,879 square feet, and of that particular piece of property, once you encroach on the property with structural improvements, then it's really important that that piece, or that particular footprint, belonged to the developer. It is, it would not impact at all our use of the property in terms of water system interconnection. So, it comes to you tonight in a form of a recommendation to sell this part, this portion of the property to the developer at a prorated cost of $7,440. And I say prorated cost. Staff determined that cost by looking at the tax assessment or the tax appraisal on the property, and then took that square footage and prorated the amount out to determine that. The developer is interested in acquiring the property at the amount offered.
Does anybody on council have any further questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 19-2 authorizing the sale of the property to Toniva LLC.
Thank you. And any, any discussion? Is there anyone?
You have a second.
Say what? Oh, a second, sorry.
Second.
Thank you, thanks for keeping up. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on this matter? Seeing no one, is, if there's no other discussion, then we're ready to vote.
Faure Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
All right, on our agenda, Resolution 19-3, which is approving the acquisition of real property for the construction of our new middle school. We're excited to continue with this. Mr. Sora, would you summarize it?
Yes, Mayor, as you've indicated, over the last several months, staff has brought, at the request of the school system, various pieces of property which, within that footprint of the proposed development of the new middle school, for approval for purchase. As you're aware, that while property that is, is under the management of the school system is strictly that, it is owned by the city. However, all school facilities are managed by the Board of Education. But the fact that the property is owned by the city brings this issue to you in terms of acquisition of the property. Tonight, before you, is 924 Oakland, Oakland Drive, for a acquisition cost of $47,200. You may recall, this was the subject of an initial authorization, or resolution for authorization to pursue eminent domain, in the event that the owners could not be located. Since that time, and I think we took that action in probably August or September, since that time, a number of the heirs have been located, and it is, they have agreed to a sale of the property. This will leave only one property, I think it's 908 Oakland, Oakland Drive, which is the only parcel that's not colored in blue that you see on the, in that particular blocks we have. We'll have one remaining property to acquire in order to aggregate all of the property necessary for the development of the middle school. So, this comes to you in a recommendation from the Board of Education, which took, which took a vote on this at their December 17 meeting.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 19-3, acquisition of property.
And a second?
Second.
All right, anyone wish to discuss?
I'm just glad we were able to get through the hoops to realize this without having to use eminent domain, but track down all those loose ends to figure out who to pay.
Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, I think we're ready to vote.
Faure Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Next is our consent agenda. Mr. Sora, if you'll read the items.
Yes, Mayor, we have the minutes of the December 4, 2019. Yes, Mayor, we have the minutes of the December fourth, two thousand and eighteen City Council meeting, minutes of the December eleventh, twenty eighteen special work session, minutes of the, of the December eighteenth, twenty eighteen City Council work session. Resolution nineteen dash four, approving the title six program for Bristol, Tennessee Transit. Resolution nineteen five, authorizing the amendment of an agreement related to the demolition landfill. Resolution nineteen dash six, adopting amended and restated rules and procedures of the City Council. Resolution nineteen dash seven, authorizing purchase of software support for the Fire Department. Resolution nineteen dash eight, approving submittal of an application for the Federal Emergency Management Agency for funding under the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Program. And resolution nineteen dash nine, authorizing the submittal of an application to the Tennessee State Historic Preservation Office for the Historic Preservation Fund Grant.
Right. Council members, is there, are there any items anyone wishes to remove? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Tara, we're ready.
Power Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Lilly, welcome you to talk to us and update us a little bit about schools.
Well, Happy New Year. My report this evening is fairly short. We actually just got back to school. Teachers came back yesterday, and kids came back today. But we actually did have a lot going on over the break. We had, we had a lot of fun. Before Christmas, we had a three-day girls' basketball tournament. We've had that for several years. We actually rebranded it this year, and it is now called the Arby's Girls Holiday Hoops for Doc, and of course, that's in reference to Doc Maples. We had eight teams at that tournament, including teams from North Carolina, Kentucky, and even two from West Virginia. After Christmas, we had the Arby's Classic, and we had eighteen teams there, not only locally, but also as far away as Alaska, Utah, and the Bahamas. So that was a lot of fun. We, we had a lot of people come out for that. And this past weekend, we had Brawl in the Hall, which of course is our wrestling tournament, and we had twenty-five teams representing eight different states. So we've had, we've welcomed a lot of teams in for some spirited play, and it's been a lot of fun. We've also recently kicked off our Vikings for Life fundraiser, and our first project with that is a six thousand square foot field house in the Stone Castle, which actually is already under construction. And you can, you can find out more about that fundraiser on our website. There are some naming rights opportunities and, and online donation forum, what have you. But you might also be interested, if you're Facebookers, you might be interested in looking up the Vikings for Life Facebook page. We are doing a profile every week of a former Viking, so it's got some, some interesting articles on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very, very interesting for some of the things going on. Appreciate you. And I wanted to recognize that Joel Staten was here, previous mayor, and David Ring, you're serving on the E nine one one board? E one one, which board are you serving? Emergency Communications Board, we appreciate that. And Mail and Luttrell, who's with Bristol Pirates, we appreciate your attendance. Mr. Sora, if you want to go ahead and give your comments.
I'm going to be very brief. First, I'd like to commend our Department of Public Works and our Department of Parks and Recreation for their efforts last month. You may recall in around the second weekend, I guess, of, of Christmas shopping season, we received a pretty significant and pretty early snowstorm. And I don't recall our crews being, being challenged that early with that significant of a storm. And to that point, every year you have some level of turnover and new drivers and so forth, and they, they performed like, like they're in mid-season stride. And I, I really appreciate, as, as I know the community does, the efforts that they put into, to making our roads safe for travel. I know Mayor Fire Robin will mention the Martin Luther King activities on the, on the twenty-first. I would like to remind you of your day-long work session that will start at eight-thirty on Tuesday, January the twenty-second. This will be in the Nature Center. And this kind of kicks, this kicks off our budget season, and this is the time where, where, where we want to try to get as much input from you all as to, as to the makeup of the policy aspect. There's not, there's not a more significant public policy document that you all work on during the course of the year than our, than our city budget. So this kicks off that process. That's it.
All right. Okay. Council members?
I'll go first.
Chad wishes to go.
Go Vols, first off. Now, thank you to Jeremy, Jeremy Stout for all the work he does at Steel's Creek. It's just really amazing to hear him talk, especially to the kids, and makes it interesting for all the kids, everything that's going on, and really through our entire staff, Community Relations, great job on our video and our recap of that. Terry Talbert and that group does a great job. And of course, our Public Works, Park and Rec, Police and Fire are never off a day. We've got to have you all the time, as mentioned about the snowstorms. Thank you very much. I know Lee is going to mention at least one other department, and so I'll say Happy New Year to everyone in closing.
I'll go. Happy New Year as well. We're looking forward to an outstanding twenty nineteen. I think you can see that we are very fiscally responsible by the financial report, and compliments to Tara and her department. I made my way to pay my city taxes yesterday, and I hope everybody else has already paid theirs, because as you can see, that's the engine that's driving our train. Economic development, Tom Anderson did an outstanding job today with our noon Rotary Club, and I think by the time he was finished, everyone was exhausted. It's unbelievable what we have going on here in Bristol, Tennessee, as far as economic development goes. And it's not just here in Bristol, Tennessee, it is regionally impacting. We, as Tom pointed out, through our job fair, we had fifty different companies to be a part of the job fair. You had to have active needs of employment, and there were over, how many jobs? Twenty-eight hundred that were needing to be filled, and as he made mention, less than fifteen percent of those jobs were hourly, perhaps retail-related. Many of them required definite skill and were being offered at an above-average salary. So we have jobs here, we're excited about that. Our challenge is to have a skilled labor force to fill those jobs. We have, there's lots of interest in our region as far as entities coming in to set up shop, which is why the Bristol Business Park is so important. We'll have over fifty acres, but we need to be sure that it's pad-ready so that there is that element of speed to get any industry that wants to come in up and moving. So an outstanding job, Tom. I know afterwards, we, people were just, I think, really surprised at what all we do have going on and the great information that you shared. January twenty-second is a big day for us. It's the day that we will get together, put our minds together with all of the department heads to talk about the budget and how we continue to move forward. It's a good day. It is a good day, and if, if you're a numbers nerd, it's a great day, so I'm looking forward to it. Again, Happy New Year, and we look forward to a great twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Next?
I'll go ahead. We've got, with January twenty nineteen, we have several new things happening. First of all, while the city's already gotten the, at least the staff side has started some of the budget activities to say, all right, here's where we are right now and some of those things. When we look across the state, we've got some new state leaders who are being sworn in, both at the federal level with a new senator, but also we have a new governor who in January will be inaugurated. And with some of those new faces comes some new relationship opportunities, as well as seeing what comes out of those. And so it's a good opportunity, and our Tennessee General Assembly is essentially kicking off, I don't think they formally kicked off just yet, but before our next meeting in February, I think several of us will be going down to be able to meet with some of our legislators on our tri-cities legislative agenda. So look forward to that, and I'm sure we'll have some follow-up as, as the, the session progresses.
You're good. Okay. I have just a few things. Try not to get too many. Are you watching it already, Chad? I was checking. I was trying to remember, when did we learn about our Work Ready's community? Was that before our last council meeting or after that?
Probably early December, I think.
Yeah, so just with talking about workforce, et cetera, getting that designation is very significant. So we appreciate the work that was done, and also our whole workforce and businesses in Northeast State and everybody who's working on that. And congratulate Jeff McCord for moving to a state position as well. So I just wanted to make a note, a couple of people talking about some of the studies that we've done, and just want to say that it's, I feel, and I think all of us here feel, that it's really important to have studies and pay for the experts who know how to complete those and have data, knowledge for where to get data, how to access it, how to analyze it, different talents for, for putting those together, and gives us opportunity to decide before we go start down a path for investment, where are we going, what are we doing? I know we're going to be talking about that some at our City Council meeting, so I think that it really is well worth the funds that we spend to do some of our studies, so we know what direction. School facility study is one of those that has tremendous amount of information provided in that study, et cetera. Also, wanted to say that Mr. Sora and I participated in a regional chamber meeting or sometime in December that was, I thought it was very good, a lot of people sitting around the table. We shared a lot of information, gave updates for what's going on. I was very proud to share some of the things that we're, we're doing in Bristol. And I guess another thing kind of along those lines was that we had, have had a group, a task force, working on a homeless day center for working. We are the only city in the tri-cities that does not have a place for showers and laundry that's available to the majority. We do have some services, but some folks don't qualify for the Salvation Army or Haven Arrests. So it's really critical that we, we do that, and I think that's one step. There's, it's a very complicated problem, and we can't solve it with a magic wand, but we do what we can, and the, the day center study is going to be very helpful to move in that direction. And Christina Blevins serves on that from our city with community development, as well as the Bristol, Virginia Community Development Person, Ellen Dalton. Just, Martin Luther King, encourage everybody to participate with March and the program. Earlier in the day, Habitat for Humanity is sponsoring a service opportunity. Service is a really important part of that holiday celebration. It's going to be in the parking lot behind the Bristol, Virginia City Hall, the Fire Department, in that gravel lot there, and it's going to be building walls for a couple of Bristol Habitat houses. So encourage people to participate. Also, we'll say the program will have some video from dialogue that we had that included a couple of our SROs from our schools and, and young people from the YMCA, and it, the dialogue, they were hungry for more, for talking together more, so we hope to do more of that in the future. The last thing I'll say is that we're glad to start a new year and glad to have had holidays, a lot of us with good family time, et cetera, but also a lot of difficult times, including Lee Powers, the death of your mom, and we all express our sympathies and makes us all appreciate the folks that we have. Also, we'll say that Friends of Steel Creek lost two, two important members, Powell Foster, whose wife Sharon is also active, and Clarence Wilkerson, whose wife Becky Wilkerson is very active in Friends. And then I'll also just add for difficulties is that my sister's been in Duke Medical Center, and I'm getting some of that hospital stuff firsthand. It's looking like she's doing better, but it's been a really tough time and just adds to some of the stress. So I'm sure there's lots and lots of people out there that have some hard times too, and a lot of people who are glad to see twenty nineteen get here. So anyway, appreciate everybody, look forward to our time together. And with that, we're adjourned.